Agents to fly of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. We are all here. This is a full table tonight. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Larry, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You have to approve the agenda, Jamie. Okay. I'm sorry. Did you have it pulled up yet? I was gonna see which of our schools was first.
The agenda or what?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I do not have it pulled up yet.
Okay, we're gonna start with our recognitions of students and staff. If I could have John Kerry Early Childhood first.
Hi, my name is Anne Westbrook and I'm the Director of Early Childhood. And with me...
Good evening. My name is Erica Anderson and I'm the Parents as Teachers Coordinator in the District.
Hi.
Tonight, I'm looking around. I don't see her yet, but I do want to take this time. Hopefully, maybe she'll pop in. The Melville Parents as Teachers Program this year has been innovative in identifying our low-income families in the district. We partnered with the St. Louis Area Diaper Bank to provide 35,000 diapers annually to the families in need right here in our community. This partnership has increased our enrollment and allowed us the opportunity to educate families on the importance of early childhood education and early intervention. I am honored to introduce, recognize Jess Adams, founder of the St. Louis Area Diaper Bank, and her success. Just this last month, she distributed her millionth diaper here in the St. Louis area. And she's just had such an impact on our community. And so I look forward to working with her in the future. And I know many people hear diapers and don't realize what a benefit it is, but there's so many families that that diaper makes a big difference. So, and with that, our high-needs families, when we go on home visits, will receive a package of diapers on every single visit. So it's a nice incentive and a great way for us to be able to get in and partner with the families, which then leads them into our early childhood program.
That's wonderful. Well, if she gets here before you guys are gone, please let us know who she is, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, NEA.
Hi, my name is Courtney McClure. I'm a 5th grade teacher at Woland Elementary School, and I'm here to recognize my student Cece Colombo. So Cece is a student who shows determination in everything that she does. This school year, she has improved her reading level by four spots, which is a really great improvement for this year. And she's made it up to a 5th grade reading level, which is so impressive. She works hard and she takes extra time in her day to make sure she's reading and really comprehending what she's reading. Also, in math, she tries really hard and shows perseverance. Even if she doesn't get it on the first try, she keeps on trying until she can get it. Cece is a really great problem solver and is a great example to her peers for showing perseverance, determination, and really hard work. Congratulations, Cece.
Jamie and Lisa, this is officially your last meeting. He's over there.
Put the short termers on.
Hey, Jamie, can we borrow you for a second?
It's mine.
Why? And while they're taking that photograph, is Owen Wybreck here? Is Owen here yet? Okay. What about Michaela Adams? Michaela, come on up. I'm so excited. All right. I'm gonna wait until they're listening because this is very impressive. I know our other student was not going to be able to join us tonight, but I'm so pleased that Michaela's here. This is what Michaela's teachers said about her. She's receiving the Integrity Award. And we're covering, I think, January, February, and March. We're glomming a bunch together tonight. Michaela is a great student who is always first to help a classmate who's struggling when working collaboratively. She will often say, "I'll help you, but I won't do it for you." This part is just amazing, Michaela. Recently, a student took a picture of Michaela's work to copy it later when she was at home. Michaela emailed her teacher and told her what was going on. She said, "I even tried to make arrangements to help the student complete the work herself. I appreciated her maturity in this situation. She promotes learning and educational integrity every day in my classroom," her teacher speaking. "She's an excellent role model for other students." I think that's amazing, Michaela. That's certainly... And they'll take your picture also. And I know our last... Jamie? Mr. Popular tonight. Our next student couldn't be with us, but I wanted to tell you really quickly. Her name is Bella Cruz. And Bella exhibits honesty in all parts of her day. She's a leader in her classroom and shows kindness when she's working with her friends. Bella makes good choices and has a calm demeanor. She's always smiling and doing the right thing. Bella shows integrity, and she's an excellent role model for other students, and we'll make sure that Bella gets all of her stuff. And if our other young gentleman shows up before we're finished... Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to action items by consent. 5A, B, and C. Oh, no, I just skipped right on over. We're done. Sorry, guys. Open period for patron comments. We don't have any. And then standing committee reports. Peggy, have you had anything?
I have not had any committees meetings. I've been really lucky lately, honestly. But I did attend a CAPS presentation, actually before the last meeting, but I didn't mention it. And I just wanted to... I went as if I went along with the kids. I drove. But I went to a presentation at T-Rex to learn what the kids were being taught there. So kids that were in CAPS gave a presentation, two kids that might enrolling CAPS. So it was very informational and a really awesome situation. Kids loved it, lots of excitement. And I just thought I would share that that part of our district is just doing wonderful things, so.
Very good. Larry?
I wanted to report that we've nominated for the MSBA Outstanding Board of Education Award in Governance. And I wanted to thank everybody on this team for your contribution. And going through some of my cryptic notes and straightening some of them out and helping me to put the replies together, you all had a chance to look at. They've already been handed out to members of the committee. And the way it works, there will be four people that will actually score each one of these. I won't get to see anything from Region 7. I'm doing other regions, so there's a complete separation of what's going on. And then those subgroups will be brought back together April 17th, where we'll make the final decisions, and then notifications will go out. But again, thank you very much.
Absolutely. You guys do a lot of work on those, so we appreciate it.
Well, and Larry took the lead on that, so he really did the lion's share. We had a facilities meeting earlier this week, and we're gonna hear a lot about facilities later. So kind of everything that we talked about there, I think, will be presented later today, so.
Aside from being at the facilities meeting as well, I have nothing else. And if there's no other committee reports, I've asked both Demi and Addie to say a few words about their experience this week.
So students met outside yesterday for a student-led walkout. And then that was for about 17 minutes. And then beforehand, we met in the cafeteria to write letters to Missouri representatives, sharing their thoughts and concerns. I interviewed a couple of students about what they thought about the walkout, and mainly it was mixed reviews on the success. And currently, there is going to be another student-led walkout in the works, so follow up on that.
For Melville, the walkout was really small, and we did not meet or anything. There was just messages from like different students when it was or where we would meet. And so they met on the softball or baseball field. And it was really small. And then some students said that it was good. And then one of my friends went out and she said it was mostly good, but then like some of the students just wanted to not be in class. So then they were like disrespectful. And so, but overall, it was pretty good. And so it wasn't like nothing dramatic happened or anything like that, so it was good. Oh, and then last weekend, five Stuco students and I got to go to the Student Council State Convention. And it was really fun and it was really good. It was in Lebanon, Missouri. And so we got to bring back ideas for our school, and it was just a really cool experience.
Awesome. Very cool. Was there anything else you wanted to share? I know you just talked about that one topic. Is there anything else you wanted to share?
Students went down to the Capitol to compete in DECA, which is like an economic group. They create conventions and present them to a board, so they did well there. And we have some people moving up to the international level as well.
Thank you, ladies. Okay. We have a school board election coming up on Tuesday, April 3rd. Dr. Lisa Dorsey and Jamie Murphy both decided not to run for reelection. So we have two open spots. We have three candidates running, so I will introduce them. As they are listed on the ballot, number one is Lisa Messmer. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Number two is Tori Belkey. And Tori, are you Victoria Tori Belkey?
Yes.
Okay. And then number three on the ballot is Ron Fedochak. All right, so please make sure you remind everybody that you know to go out and vote on April 3rd. Okay, could I get a motion to approve action items by consent A, B, and C? Try this again.
I'd like to pull A.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve 5B and C?
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Larry? All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Lisa, do you just want to vote on this separately?
The reading of minutes? Yeah.
Okay. All right, since Lisa was not here, we're gonna vote. She wants to vote separately on that. So can I get a motion to approve 5A?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Kevin, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. All right, motion carries 6-0-1. All right, we will move on to our student achievement. We will have John Kerry come back up, please.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you in regards to our programs tonight. Melville Early Childhood is the umbrella that encompasses the following four programs. Parents as Teachers, which serves prenatal through kindergarten entrance. The Early Childhood Diagnostic Department, which evaluates children ages 3 through kindergarten entrance for special education eligibility and services. Preschool Programming for General and Special Education, which serves students ages 3 through kindergarten entrance. And then itinerant special education services, which are non-classroom special education services delivered in the community, which serves ages 3 through kindergarten entrance. And so due to the nature of our programs, our dashboard data is going to look somewhat different from that you've seen at elementary, middle, or high schools. And our Early Childhood Preschool Program is funded by the Early Childhood Special Education Grant in Missouri. And we follow the state model of four half-days of programming, so students can attend two, three, or four half-days per week. And our funding stipulates special education caseload numbers, class sizes, and how many tuition-based peer models can be enrolled in our integrated classrooms. So that brings us to our first number on the dashboard, which is 180. And that's the current number of four-day-a-week tuition-based slots in our program. And so our funding stipulates that integrated class sizes be made up of 50% of students with disabilities. And currently, all of our slots but four are filled, and we do have a waitlist of around 85. If you look at the number 324, that's our current total enrollment in all of our 14 classrooms district-wide. We have six different locations. So we have eight classrooms at John Kerry, two at Point Elementary, and one class each at Forter, Beasley, Hagaman, and Trotline Elementarys. Now, program-wide, we oversee 392 students. So that number includes students who would receive itinerant services in the community. So program-wide, 53% of our population is eligible for special education and related services. And an enrollment in our classroom settings consists of 44% of students receiving special education services. 56% is tuition-based, 19% is free and reduced, and 13% ELO. We have 59 staff members at the Early Childhood Program, and that does not include the Parents as Teachers Program. So we have 17 teachers, 17 therapists, 22 paraprofessionals, and a director, secretary, and nurse. And then our Diagnostic Department received 169 referrals thus far this school year for early childhood special education. And referrals are made when there's concerns around the child's development in the five areas of either communication, physical, social-emotional behavior, cognition, or adaptive behavior. So then the diagnostic team meets with the parents and any other service providers to determine if an evaluation is warranted, conducts that testing, and then determines if a child meets the Missouri eligibility criteria for special education. Of the 168 referrals thus far this year, 80 children have met Missouri eligibility criteria for special education services. And then the remainder of our dashboard data is taken from our brand-new curriculum that we adopted this year, and it's aligned to the Missouri early learning standards. And those curricular areas are social and emotional development, language and literacy, mathematics, physical development, and science. So we introduced standards-based grading this year, and that data is collected and communicated to parents three times a year through a report card. So the dashboard data that you're going to see is students who have scored a 3 on the rubric. They can either score a 3, meeting expectations, a 2, approaching expectations, or a 1, which is beginning to learn the expectations. So you're gonna see students in that dashboard that are receiving a 3 in those areas. Was that my bell to stop? And so from these areas, we have seen an increase in all of our data from Term 1. And again, this will be our baseline year for our curriculum.
All right, do we do Parents as Teachers next? Any questions?
Yes, I think so, yes.
Any questions? Are we good to... Sure. Do you wanna... Do you guys want to see both dashboards first, or do you want to ask questions as we go? Huh? Do both? Okay. Please, go ahead.
Good evening again. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As many of you know, Parents as Teachers is often the first impression that families have on our district. Therefore, I would like to give you a brief overview of our program before I get into the dashboard. As Anne had previously mentioned, our dashboard looks a lot different than what you're used to seeing, so. Parents as Teachers promotes the optimal early development and learning health of young children by supporting and engaging their parents and caregivers. We advance the delivery of high-quality services for families through a comprehensive system of supports and innovative solutions. Our evidence-based model delivers parent education primarily through personal visits and group meetings. We equip parents with knowledge and resources to provide their children from prenatal to kindergarten for a stronger start in life and greater success in school. There are four dynamic components to the Parents as Teachers model. Personal visits, group connections, resource network, and child screenings. Together, these four components form a cohesive package of services with four primary goals. To increase parent knowledge of early childhood development and improve parent practices. Provide early detection of developmental delays and any health issues. Prevent child abuse and neglect. And increase children's school readiness and success. Currently, our enrollment in our program is 525 families with 680 children we are serving. Now we can take a look at our dashboard, which is up on the screen. Is this working? Click it. All right, I'm ready. All right. So I'm gonna review the first several points. Our essential requirements that were required and held to by the Parents as Teachers National Center. And then after I get through those, the last ones are those four components that I mentioned, with the home visiting, the resources, the screenings, and that. So please don't hesitate to stop at any time with any questions. Parent educators obtain competency-based professional development and training, and they renew their certification with the National Office annually. Currently, we have eight part-time parent educators and two full-time parent educators this year. And we are at 100% already. They've already met all their professional development for the year. The second one up here is our family-centered assessment. Again, this is an essential requirement. Parent educators complete and document a family-centered assessment annually. It's our first year we implement it, and it was approved by the National Center, a family strength snapshot. So what this tool does is gives us a better overview of how we can better partner with this family and facilitate our visits moving forward. And so the National Center, the guidelines, is that 60% of families that have received one personal visit throughout the program year have been administered the family-centered assessment, and we're currently at 55%. So we're on track to meet our goal before the end of the year. Let's see. The third one up here is, besides the family-centered assessment, parent educators develop and document goals with each family they serve. Again, this is an essential requirement, that 60% of families are expected to have documented goals. We're currently at 77%. Our goal, of course, is by the end of the program year, 100% of our families will have goals established that they're working on moving forward. The number's low right now because some of the families that just joined the program haven't had an opportunity to set goals with their parent educators yet. So I'm just clicking along here. Sorry, I'm trying to see the fourth one, which is the home visiting. So now we're getting into those four components, which home visiting, of course, is the essential component that we do with them, Parents as Teachers. And 328... I want to start with our allocation. So our allocation with DESI is 2,657 home visits. We're currently at 1,801 home visits as of today that have been conducted throughout this program year. Going back historically looking, in 2015, 16, 1,802 visits were done throughout the program year. And last year, a total of 2,030 visits were done. So right now, where we're at, we're already passing what's been done in the past. And we are on track to meet our complete allocation of the 2,657 visits. Another part of ours is group... Sorry, I'm clicking these, and as I click them, they're getting out of order, so bear with me because I'm trying to see. The group connections is also another component of our program. The National Center asks that we hold 12 group connections throughout the program year. This is really to bring families together and support them outside of the home, to have them build relations with other families in the community. And so we do typically two group connections a month. We've done 15 so far this year. And we've had about 121 families participate in at least one group connection. And then the last is our screenings. And of course, this is a big component of our program. Through screenings, 619 children have currently been screened with either the ASQ, which that's for our children for four months to 36 months, or with the Dial-4, which is for our 3- to 5-year-olds. And the Dial-4 is what we use when we screen child on motor, both fine and gross motor, concepts, and language. And through the Dial-4 screening, that's where a lot of the referrals are made to the diagnostic team and then on to add to our early childhood program. So it is a key component to our program in our district. Lastly is resources. It's just as important as the other three that I have mentioned. We pride ourselves in providing our families with any resources they need. Many people don't think as parents as teachers in that light, but we provide and connect them to whether they need utility resources. I mentioned early connecting them to something like the Diaper Bank, where they're able in getting free diapers throughout the month. We also connect families to mental health services and first steps and SSD services. And so, again, I just want to thank you this evening for allowing us to come, for your continued support as we serve the children and families in our community. And not only are we leaving a great first impression, but we're leaving long-term impacts with the children in our district.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Questions?
I have a question. It's a minor question. Thank you for your efforts. I think that, and we talk a lot about big district, but the idea of entering a child's life early is really so important in that educational model, informing those relationships and identifying those areas or those gaps where we can really impact that child's life even before coming into our more traditional K-12. So I'm a huge supporter of the program for those reasons, for none other. Can you remind me how long your program year is? Because, you know, when you're talking, you're like 2,000 or 2,500 visits, I guess, and you're partially 67% or something through. I can't read that print.
And I was having difficulty because I did have the numbers, and I apologize.
Oh, no, I can't read it either, so... But I'm looking at that, thinking about the math and where we are in the year, and it must be longer than just May. How long... How much more time do you have to make up the other thousand?
We do have through May, correct.
Just through May, and so that's...
Correct. And so parent educators start back on July 1, seeing high-needs families through the month of July. And then our high-needs families start getting visits as of August 1.
Okay. That's busy.
That's a lot of visits.
That's a lot of visits.
Great job, ladies. Thank you.
I want to thank you both for answering the questions that were sent to you guys so thoroughly. And also, I don't know if you'd already done it or not, but incorporating that into your presentation too, that is absolutely awesome. You hit a ton of great points there. What both of you do is so important to our whole school system. It's after learning more about the elementary schools and some of the challenges that they face when kids are coming into kindergarten with high ELL rates or some of the other things. You have such a big role to play in this, and you're doing a great job with it. Hopefully, we continue to advance it in the future, and I believe we have plans to do that, so that's all very good. I also really want to applaud your efforts to increase community awareness, especially on the Parents as Teachers. I remember when I first heard about that, I wasn't sure what it was. I thought it was point after touchdown, so I was completely off. But I think that's great, though, what you're doing in partnering with the Diaper Bank and that. So kudos to what you're doing, and so important. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jamie?
That was a good one. Early childhood. First off, thank you for educating Lily and Josie. You'll be there next year. So just because I have you here, how are we at early childhood? So one of the things, we had a teacher a couple of years ago come up, a kindergarten teacher, and was talking about her classroom, and she was overwhelmed. And then I toured a couple of schools and talked to quite a few kindergarten teachers. And the consistent complaint that I heard was not with the children that have gone through early childhood. It was the children that are coming into kindergarten for the first time. They're there for a full school day, and they haven't had any preschool or any contact with, you know, the basics, like standing in line, sitting still, things like that. And their problems were just... And their problems were just trying to catch the kids that didn't have early childhood up. So, we all, in this case, can very much understand the importance of it. So, my question kind of is on the, you know, where are we in capacity in our early childhood? Do we still have capacity within the schools that we have? What could we do to encourage people that are going to be going and entering kindergarten, you know, in the next couple of years, to take advantage of middle or early childhood, or at least find that before they enter our school districts?
Sure. I do know that our program, like our tuition-based slots are at capacity. I can't speak to the rooms that are available in the district, however...
Do we still have a waiting list?
Yes, yes, we do.
How long is... Do you know... I'm sorry, my email hasn't been working. I probably should have sent you all this in advance. Do you know how long the waiting lists are?
We have a waitlist...
You could be ballpark.
Well, right now, I know that we started with 85 on the waitlist.
Eighty-five on the waitlist? And are we still like 15 to 20 in a classroom, or is that just my daughter's?
That is...
Because we're a special needs classroom?
Yes. So, we have a couple of different models. One is the integrated classrooms, which have a class size of around 12.
Okay.
And then, we have two team-taught models, which are class sizes of around 16 to 20, and those are partially funded through tuition dollars.
Okay.
Yes, so those can have a larger class size.
So, at minimum, to meet our waiting lists, we need four more classrooms? If you're talking 20 to 80.
If you were going to do that model, exactly.
We've got some work to do, guys.
Yes, we do.
So, good luck. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I want to kind of talk to that just really briefly from the standpoint of, as we see the enrollment decline over in the elementary and looking at how we can shift. But those classroom spaces may not open up where I want my kid to be, right? So, if we open space at one elementary, but people don't want to go there, then we're kind of challenged in that respect.
And isn't that the case over at John Kerry? Don't we have openings over there?
So, we have a what?
Do we have openings at John Kerry?
We have four openings currently.
Right, and we have 85 on a list, so it's not always about...
It's, I want to go to the one in my backyard. I don't want to drive down to the one that's about...
Exactly, right, yes.
But the, I guess, my then-follow-up question is, of the 85 kids, and we have no way to track this, I am positive, how many of them are just foregoing early childhood at all, right? Because I'd imagine of the 85, if it's like, well, we don't want to drive down the street, we want to drive down the street, we don't want to go all the way down Telegraph. At some point, those kids aren't getting educated, I'd assume, and then they're entering our systems, and those are the kids that our kindergarten teachers at least have expressed to me when I toured those classrooms, those are the ones that they're having the most problems with. So, if there's anything we can do to kind of, to bridge that gap, which it's not an easy solution, so good luck.
Do you have any idea of the waiting list, whether, what area of the district gets in more, in north, south, or...
We tried to look at that, and what we have parents do is we have them check the satellite locations or John Kerry location. That would be their first choice, second choice, third choice. But a lot of our families just say, it's okay, we don't care about the location, just get us in somewhere.
Really?
So, we put them on the waitlist for everywhere, and that way, if one comes available, we call them, and if they're still interested, we can get them in later on.
So, nobody's interested in the four spots at John Kerry?
Right now, at this time of the year, is where it gets a little tricky because they're like, well, we only have so many weeks left of school, so we're going to wait.
How long have those four spots been open, though?
Very recently.
Very... Okay, all right, then that makes more sense. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you feel that if people, the people that aren't being served might be choosing other preschool situations, or do you think that you have no idea?
It's tough to say, exactly, because like he alluded to, that's very tough to track.
Right.
You know, I would hope that they would, you know, enroll with us, you know, if they could, but...
And be on the waitlist. I wonder if we would have any recommendations for them to go... I mean, you hate to send them away, but something's better than...
Do we have any follow-up with the waitlist people? Do you do any, other than to call them and tell them we have an opening?
Other than to call them and tell them that there's an opening, no, but that might be a good place to start.
So, just thinking about families and kind of how families operate, for some, a half-a-day model, four days a week, does not fit into their family schedule and their working piece, you know, how the family works. So, you know, we've had these very tiny discussions around, oh, it'd be great if we could go full day, but we would need, we'd need a lot more space for that.
So, that was kind of my comment. I think that the families who took the initiative to get on a waitlist are interested in their child, you know, having an educational program that early age, right? And for us, the district didn't meet what our work requirements were. So, naturally, we sought out a place that would and accommodated the full day, and it was on the way to work.
Right.
So, I think that geography can be, for some parts of our district, a challenge, to your point and yours about broadening it, but it's kind of the luck of the draw in whether or not the right classroom, from the geography perspective, actually opens up and can be an efficient use of that space. So, but I think that, I would hope that those 85 individuals, if they're on the waitlist, and they are, they do have some interest, so maybe they are looking at another service, perhaps.
Pursuing other options, hopefully. Okay, any other questions? Larry?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The thing I like about the dashboard, it starts to pull some numbers and data points together. What I'm kind of interested in is, are you starting to already look at ways that you can kind of start throwing data together and start looking at trends, and how this is eventually going to tie into as a predictor of what we might see in K3? If we see coming through early childhood that we've got kids really struggling in some area, it kind of gives us a head start to put some resources in place to help.
Absolutely, and we've, this has been like the first start of just trying to track that data, and we finally got our computer systems to communicate with one another. We're finally on assist in order to track those grades all the way through third grade, so now, we can look at that third grade reading level. So, that's exactly what we intend to do.
The fact that you're thinking about it, that's what I was hoping for.
Long-term data. Good.
One other question. Do you have any kind of partnership or relationship with the other childcare organizations, kind of swapping ideas or with the work you've done? If you have an opportunity to influence them?
Absolutely.
It's in our best interest that all kids are prepared?
Yes.
When they come in?
When I mentioned, you know, the umbrella of early childhood and itinerant services are part of that model, so we have an itinerant teacher who goes and services children at their area, daycare, preschool, that they're already enrolled. And so, she serves as a consult to those teachers, to bring them materials, to brainstorm ideas and supports for those students, so yes.
If we could just get Clifford to go there.
Exactly, yes. And we've even had some of their teachers come and attend professional development with us as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both very much. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our review of the universal pilot breakfast program. Ms. Katie, how are you tonight?
We could sample this.
I'm good, how are you all? Good. Just the green button? Push the button. One to the right. I'm hitting the one to the... Okay, there we go. Okay, so I'm here to talk to you about the huge success of the universal fee breakfast program. I'm sure you all saw the data, but I just... There we go. Just a couple of slides, just kind of summarizing the data. Before the pilot, I broke it out into the three different pay categories, as well as the total participation. And then, during the pilot, if you remember, it started February 5th, so we're a good over month into it. You could see that every single pay category went up, which we knew it would, as well as then, total participation up by, you know, 20% or so. And there's just a summary of it all. Like I said, that's our goal, was to see participation increase, not only in our free-and-reduced kiddos, which was a concern with it being low before we started the program, but we also saw, obviously, an increase in the full-paid kids, so... And then, with that, I spoke to you that I was potentially toying around the idea of having to add additional staff member. Well, that came apparent on day one, so thankfully, I had a staff member already there to hop on that additional register. So, we have three registers going at a time, just to get those kids through. The buses have been great. They start on Andrea, and they've been unloading the buses right at 7:40, and wezing 220 kids around. And normally, by 8 o'clock, they're out. I mean, it's, well, for third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, all eat in their classrooms because there's definitely not enough room for the entire school to be eating breakfast in the cafeteria. But it's been a huge success. So, we are still claiming at the three different pay categories. And the other side of the coin was to prove that it was successful, was that it wasn't a financial burden on the school food nutrition department, which it is not, is actually a gain. Right now, actually, with running the data from today, we're just under about $2,700. And that is just because me being mindful of our food costs, even with the additional, the labor. But just having more of those free-and-reduced kids coming in makes up for the cost of having the full-paid kids. And I know that was a concern about, you know, are we going to be able to include the cost with those full-paid kids? And yes, we can, and then some. So, it's definitely a sustainable program. So, I don't know if you have any questions for me about it? Like I said, it's a win-win. I think the kids really enjoy it.
How did we let parents know about the program?
We sent letters home. We even have developed in Spanish and Bosnian, I think, as well, the same letter, due to the English as the second language barrier over there. Andrea, I know, put it on Facebook.
And all the social...
Yes, tons of signs. I don't, with balloons and, and just talking about it with the kids during lunch. Actually, right now, our participation at breakfast is just about lunch. So, I mean, that's how much it's grown, but just the cafeteria staff talking it up. We did have some raffles with some Build-A-Bears that were donated. We had four Build-A-Bears, so the first four weeks, at the end of the week, all the names are put in the hat for the kids that ate breakfast with us that week. And let me tell you, the kids were really excited when they come through, like, I'm going to win that bear! And so, it was just fun to see them, but just spread the word by mouth, by social media, by old-school letters, I think email blasts.
Email blasts.
Yeah.
We have it on our website.
Yeah, so I think the word definitely got out. Yeah.
Good.
So, it's definitely a win-win, and I'm recommending we continue definitely for the end of the school year, so...
Okay.
Any questions you have of me about the program?
Jamie?
I'm going to be off-topic here a little bit. So, we provide breakfast to kids before school for free, right?
Correct.
Okay. Got that, good with that. This is just me being curious. Do we have any system in place, and this has nothing to do with this program, for kids that are on free-and-reduced lunch to eat in the summer and when they're not in school? Are they still pretty... Okay.
Yeah, there are some schools, and Andrea could talk to that as far as Beasley.
Beasley, Corvus, and Berkeley.
Beautiful, okay, just making sure.
Backpacks at home on the weekend?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a summer cafe program. We partner with...
That's right.
Same with the United, that's true.
See, half the time, I forget what I hear here and what I hear in Jeff City, and then they all get blurred, and then I'm trying to figure out like what we do versus what the rest of the state does. Okay, so I was just making sure because it's essential for their physical growth and their emotional growth and their, you know, anyways. All right, sorry, thank you.
No problem, those high-need areas are definitely being, yeah.
All right, any other questions? No? Okay. We need, if somebody wants to make a motion for the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to facilities.
Oh, these are going to be easy.
I've got a lot of information for you. First, I'd like to discuss the gym floor replacement at Melville Senior High. We solicit bids. I'm going to talk, the floor is 60-plus years old. It is the original floor, and is, I believe it's been sanded twice, and it's just...
Can't be sanding any more.
It's expired, it's, yeah, it's past its lifetime. As you've seen, we had only one bid, so I want to discuss that. The bid we got was from Missouri Floor, who did the Oakville floor last year. I did talk to our consultant, Balti Company, they were just too busy, they were booked already for the summer, so that's why they, no bid from them, and then Flooring Systems, it was just too big of a job for them. They're more of the smaller tile, kind of the BCT we got in the hallways and projects like that, so they did not submit a bid. So, we'd like to move forward with Missouri Floor for a total with contingency and professional fees for $201,144.
Do you know what did we pay for Oakville's?
Oakville was around $155. And the reason this bid is a little bit more is Oakville Senior is on a slab, Melville is above the cafeteria here, so it's a totally different structure underneath. So, I got, the demo is going to be a little more cost is where the cost comes in.
We did look into all these questions at the facilities meeting, and, you know, we did, they did show us the work that was, the additional work that was going to be required on the floor here, as opposed to the one in Oakville, mostly with destruction of the old floor, more than construction of the new floor, so solid old building.
And Missouri Floor did, Lindberg, I believe, has a floor like this, and they replaced it, and they kind of know what they're getting into, so I think it's, I think it's a good honest bid.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Missouri Flooring Company in the amount of $201,144, which includes professional and contingency fees.
Second.
Kevin, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to HVAC.
HVC control package. This started with our HVC package we did back in February for Melville and Oakville. In that package, there was about $110,000 for controls in Oakville with a $55,000 rebate come back from Ameren. And they went ahead and put a proposal together for us to do a total EMS project at the school and get the 50% rebate. The thing is, once it be, if we did an EMS project with just what we had planned to do, we can't go back in the future and do another year. Once you do one, you can't go back and get that Ameren.
You can only do one once.
One and done, yeah. So, I went and got a proposal, they put it together, and I'm sure everybody's kind of looked at it. So, it's additional $323,300. That would bring our total Ameren rebate up to $217,911. They also got in there, our estimated annual utility savings is over $45,000, which comes to like a 2.3-year payback, so...
It's not bad. Could you say that again with a little more joy in your voice?
Yeah, this is a no-brainer, and I want everybody to realize it, yeah.
This should be an easy one for you guys.
You know, Kevin works for Ameren, he might be able to pull strings with that either.
Yeah, maybe we can do more.
$218,000 isn't...
Who do you think got this deal for us, Jamie?
Could you get it to 218, please?
But can you do it so we can get it again down the road?
I'll throw in the extra $89.
There you go.
I move to approve the proposed...
That's the team spirit, we're looking for it, Kevin.
I move to approve proposals submitted by Automatic Controls Equipment Systems, Inc. in the amount of $223,300.
Now, down at the bottom.
I am at the bottom. So, three, I'm dyslexic, 323,300.
Very good.
Kevin, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and going on to roofing.
Oh, roofing's an easy one. We did a bid for roofing, and this is going to include Trotway, Woolland, Washington Middle, and Oakville High School. All the schools are, you know, they're on our, we got them on our program to be, to be done, and we're looking to move forward with Geisler, and Geisler is the company that did Point about five years ago, the front section of Point, they did that vinyl, or the VCT roofing out there, and we had pretty good luck with them, no issues, and we'd like to move forward with a bid of $312,289, including contingency and professional fees.
What set them apart from the, from Bade, Barge, and Shea? I can see Vice State was ridiculous.
Excuse me?
What was, what set them apart outside of just pricing from... What was, what set them apart outside of just pricing from Bade, Barch, and Shea?
Well, Bade, actually, we had, we used them back on, back in two thousand and six. They did some work at Beard Bond.
Okay.
And they flooded our school.
Okay.
And they're more expensive.
We want to stay away from that.
Okay. Fully noted.
And Barch, I mean, they're all, they're all good bids. Barch did the work over at Thordor two years ago.
Okay.
And they didn't, okay job. We had a few minor issues, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, they're capable of doing a job, I think, by the Geisler. I mean, we've, I think it's a good bid, and.
I prefer to have a bid with no problems.
Correct. And in that bid is, we got thirty thousand dollars in there for unknown, so if they don't use that, then we'll get that thirty thousand dollar badge.
Okay.
Go. I move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Geisler Roofing in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, including contingency and professional fees.
No second. Okay, well, it's a tie. Give it to him.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And what are we on now? Replacement? What am I replacing?
Ceiling replacement.
Uh, roofs, roof tiles.
Kitchen.
Yeah, this is the kitchen at Washington. Health inspector noticed our ceiling, I'm gonna say back in twenty fif, twenty fifteen. And we need to put a smooth, clean, wipeable surface in there.
Okay.
And that is part of the Melville project as well included, and that includes night rooms over at Melville. There it is, twelve by twelve ceiling tile that's glued to the ceiling. And I don't know if I've seen it, but a lot of them are falling down because the glue's wearing out. And the glue is asbestos, so we gotta abate the, eight of the, eight of the nine rooms got asbestos in the glue. So we'll have to get that abated. And so with the bid, we're looking at one hundred and forty-four thousand, five sixty-five, and then additional twenty-three thousand, four hundred for the abatement.
Do we have any issues with any other schools that are like this as well, that are not?
Not on this, not the ceilings, no.
Okay.
This one here. Melville's like playing whack-a-mole. They put one up, another one falls down, put one up, another one falls down.
There's some rooms that are pretty bad.
I was more concerned about the fact that they're not covered under the health department anymore, or approved through them. Did we have anything else like that in the district as well?
Not in the ceilings, no. I mean, there's still some, I mean, obviously asbestos tile and.
Right. Okay.
I think Addie's given us a confirmation over here that his story lines up with what you experienced. A lot of head shaking, so.
And there's probably about thirty-two rooms over there. So this is gonna be probably a fiber project if we do.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
What was the last thing you said, Mike, about twenty-three thousand?
That was for the abatement, for the asbestos abatement.
Oh, okay. But that's included in the one forty-four, correct?
It is not.
It is not? Okay. Well, we don't have a figure on that in our.
So then we need to?
Um, I do got a, I guess I did not submit that. But I can pass this around.
Do you want to do the whole thing?
I'll do the whole thing, yeah. I mean, we looked this all over the other, at the meeting, and it's great. So, all right. I move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by John Calacat Construction in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which includes professional and contingency fees. Also to approve the ceiling tile mastic of twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars with Midwest Service Group, is that correct?
Yes.
For the asbestos abatement within the glue on the tiles.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Marshall?
Yep. Just like that, million dollars.
And you didn't object to any of them.
And I didn't stutter.
It's readable tonight.
I know.
John keeps, John keeps impressing on me to not put two hundred lines of data, so I think it worked.
Way to go, John. Yeah.
It is friendly print. We do appreciate that.
Yes.
All right. Well, tonight, I want to talk about the revenue portion of the budget, and really just give you insight on the key items that really make up eighty-seven percent of our budget. And that's really those five revenue line items. If you know the basics of those five items, you've really got a pretty good handle on the entire district budget. So that's the topic for tonight. First of all, our number one revenue stream is taxes. And we've got an even year this year, twenty eighteen. It's a non-reassessment year. And so basically, that means the first amount, the first batch of data we're gonna get will be preliminary assessed value in July, and then we'll get more changes in September. So as of right now, I really don't have any data. So what that means is, we make our estimate now, basically. When you look at the last five even years, and they're highlighted, twenty sixteen, twenty fourteen, twenty twelve, so forth, the last five even years average about point five percent average increase. So that's what I'm gonna use as my estimate right now for assessed value until I get some July data. It's also interesting to note, when you look on that chart, that the assessed value, which really drives, you know, our, our tax revenue along with our tax rate, the assessed value in two thousand and eight is seventy million dollars more than the assessed value in twenty seventeen. So nine years ago, we had more assessed value, which is what your taxes are based on. So that's been, you know, one factor of a challenge for revenues keeping pace with our expenses, because this is our largest revenue stream. The other thing to note is, on the tax rate of four dollars and fourteen cents, that we currently have, that ranks twentieth out of the twenty-two county districts. So it's really important, you know, and I continue to reiterate, we really greatly appreciate the support we had with Prop R. And, and that's really wonderful, but we're still a really good value. And I think it's important not to lose sight of that. So anyway, that being said, plugging all that, those factors in, we put our budget right now at seventy-three million, three sixty-six. That number will probably not change.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? In the, every other year, when it's not a reassessment year, that number, the point five that you have estimated there now, is this a true statement? Is that new construction? And is there anything else that goes into that? Like, if somebody sells a house, does that get reassessed or not?
The main thing, in a, in a non, you're talking about a non-reassessment?
Non-reassessment.
Yeah, in a non-reassessment year, we get new construction, and it's whatever is settled on protest, positive or negative.
Okay. So we're kind of on a, every other year with reassessment, it's limited to CPI with the Hancock Amendment, so like the, the cost of inflation essentially. But that's every other year. And then in between that, we're always gonna have some number generally lower than that if CPI is positive.
That's a great point. And last year was a good example, where we had, I think, around a six percent increase in assessed value. CPI only went up two point one percent. So we only got the benefit of two point one percent of the assessed value increase. The other four percent, we got no benefit at all, other than to push our tax rates down, which is good for our people. But we didn't capture that. And you don't get to go, you know, we don't get to come in this year and go grab that extra four percent. It's, it's gone.
So as a homeowner, I'm really happy, because I got six percent assessed value or value increase to sell my house for, but I only had my taxes go up about two.
Right. But that's the whole reason that the, the model that's in place always struggles to keep pace with expenses.
Because we're only matching up every other year with the CPI rate.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next, you know, the next item on our revenue list is a basic formula. And if you go one slide back, you'll see five factors, and there's even a couple more factors than that. But the two primary factors that really drive the basic formula revenue is the weighted average daily attendance and the state adequacy target. So we go to the next page, and we look at the calculation. For the fiscal year nineteen budget, what I'm plugging in for the weighted average daily attendance is really the same that we're currently working off of, because you can use one of three numbers. It's either your estimated current year weighted average, or the first preceding year, or the second preceding year. And the way the numbers work out, it looks like ninety-eight, the ninety-eight, twenty-six number is the best estimate for next year's budget. And then the state adequacy target, that's right off of Desi's estimate right now. They've got a projection for what they think it's gonna be next year, and then the year after that. So I'm really just plugging in the Desi estimate. When you plug in the formula, the way it's shown there, that would equate to a nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase, which is like five point nine percent. That can change. You know, the taxes, when we show up for June thirtieth approval, probably gonna be the same as what's on that slide. The basic formula may be different, because it just depends what you hear throughout the spring from the state. Next item is sales tax. Sales tax is really just based on, you take the prior year weighted average daily attendance. And you can't really look at that weighted average daily attendance and tie that to the basic formula weighted average daily attendance, because they have two different ways of calculating weighted average daily attendance. In the basic formula calculation, they do some things with summer school. They swap out, you know, a year and add in another year. And that gives you a different number than the Prop C weighted average daily attendance. So if you try to tie them, they won't tie. And then the other part is the per student Desi allocation. And that's really just based on business growth. And they'll estimate that, but it really just depends, as you work your way through the year, what the business sales tax, or what the state sales tax is being generated that year, is how strong the economy is. So when you look at the attendance numbers right now, the general indicators would suggest that attendant, the weighted average daily attendance might be down around half a percent for next year, which would really be the fiscal year eighteen weighted average attendance number. And then, right now, Desi forecasts this current year to be nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars per student. So based on that, I then look at the last five years. And the last five years, the business growth averages like three point five percent. Right now, I'm using two point eight percent in fiscal year nineteen. If I use three point five percent, it would be another seventy thousand dollars of revenue. So all this is still sort of just coming together, and this budget number may change by, by June as well. And a lot of that's gonna depend on what that ninety-eight, nine eighty-eight number ends up being by the end of this year. So this is where we stand today, and that could change between now and the end of the budget season. The next item is our VIC program. And that's got a few twists and turns on the calculation. This year, this current school year, we started the year estimating at three hundred and nineteen students, which would drive two million ninety-one revenue. But you always, every year, you have to look at the prior year and look to see, because you always get paid on what you estimate. And then the following year, they true that up with what the actual is. So during this year, we're reporting three hundred and nineteen students. It drives two million ninety-one revenue. But then we have a true-up from the prior year. So that's why this current year, you'll see on the financial statements, that the budget for this current year is one million nine eighty-seven. So that being said, we look at the budget for next year. And the starting point is trying to figure out, first of all, how many students we think we're gonna have. So right now, we have three hundred and five. You go through what's gonna graduate. We're offered up, we were offered up sixteen students. That's the maximum number of students that we can take on for next year. And Jeff took all of those students. So we're signed up to take all of them. And then we're gonna maybe have a few drops over the summer. And then really what you get paid on is your average next year. So even though we think we're gonna start with two hundred and ninety-eight, I drop off three to, you know, come up with a more, you know, just more predictable number for the average during the year. So the two ninety-five is the average that, as of right now, we'll probably report to start the year off next year. And that's what they will base the payments on for next year. So next year, that two, those two hundred and ninety-five students down below there, you'll see the million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that's based on that two hundred and ninety-five students. And then we've started to get an idea of what we think we're gonna have for actual students this year versus what we estimated. And that'll probably result in a bit of a true-up there as well. Factoring all that in, you're one million eight forty-six. So that's, you know, and you don't have to know all this stuff, but just to sort of be familiar with it is nice, because like I said, it's, those five items make up eighty-seven percent. When you go through all of that, you see what we forecast this year, fiscal year eighteen. You see what the preliminary budget calculations are for fiscal year nineteen. You'll see that it's noted, current year taxes that we showed tonight really shouldn't change. Whereas the formula, it could change, Prop C sales tax could change. We didn't talk about early childhood, because that's pretty simple. They pay us next year exactly what we spent this year. So right now, my best guess is, we're probably gonna spend about three million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. So if that's true, that's what we're gonna get paid next year. So when we get near the end of the year, we might have a minor revision, but it shouldn't be anything too big. And then the VIC number that we talked about. That being said, we're looking at a one, one point six million dollar increase, or one point five percent on these five revenue items. So that's really the quick overview. Just, once again, just wanted to make sure that you've got the basics down on the revenues that really drive eighty percent of our district revenue. And that's all I've got. So whatever questions you have.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask one. I know that with, with the addition of the cap to the formula last year, they fully, it was fully funded. And that triggered funding, I think it's an additional forty-eight million for early childhood. How does that figure in with our ADA? And how does that figure, will that go into the formula, or is that allocated based upon early childhood participation?
Honestly, I really don't know. Dr. Gaines might.
It's freakishly complicated.
That's why I defer to Dr. Gaines. I've seen the formula, but I'm not convinced of it.
So there's a, it's a maximum of four percent of free reduced lunch count, or something. So there's a, kind of a lack of clarity, I think, for everybody exactly what that's gonna generate. I've not really talked to anybody that's got a good handle on what they think the number is gonna be for them.
The obvious answer is, it's not a hundred percent. It's not just gonna fall into the formula. There's a tight constraints.
I mean, unless you have just a monstrous program in a very high free and reduced lunch area, I don't see a lot of people thinking about it as significant money.
Okay.
I mean, hate to say that forty-eight million dollars is not significant money, but forty-eight million dollars spread across, how much it gets spread across.
Okay.
Becomes not that. So we, we just don't have a good handle on what it's gonna be.
And when is that supposed to begin? Or did begin already?
Well, so, in theory, it starts next year, right? So the formula needs fifty million dollars roughly to fund that. And then another fifty, I mean, in total, it needs a hundred. And what I've told people the last couple of days is, there's a difference between the money being appropriated and the money actually being distributed. So what does it mean to be fully funded? Is it fully funded when it's appropriated? Or is it fully, or is it fully funded when it's distributed? I tend to think on the distributed side personally. But that's me. So we just, I've not talked to anybody that has a really good handle on.
Because fully funded in the state of Missouri for the past few years has meant very little. very little.
Because of withholdings.
It's meant very little. I mean, as soon as, you know, fully funded would mean that they.
We, we don't have $100 million. And if you want to fund transportation, that's another $100 million.
And, yeah, that's.
So 200 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, when I started out as superintendent, we, we were 75% of allowable costs on transportation we got, and now we're down to what, 16, 18%?
Well, it's 21, so it's about.
When I say the look set, it was like, it was like 100 or 200 million. I mean, it was, we're, we're a couple hundred million dollars off.
It's 200 plus, yeah.
Okay, so it's 200 million if we want to do that, 100 million for this, 300 million dollars. And we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't have that.
And the House will probably kick out the fully funded budget so they can go home and say they kicked out the fully funded budget. The Senate will probably kick out a not fully funded onto the floor in order to have the negotiation conference. If we follow last year, somebody will offer an amendment on the floor to make it fully funded, so it's non-conferencible. It'll get on, and then the appropriations chair will lose his mind, because that'll throw his entire budget out.
Deja vu all over again.
I'm just saying, that's what happened last year. And then the governor withhold it all.
Well, to Dr. Gaines' point.
I mean, I think the, at least my perspective, is the Senate seems to have a little more interest in funding higher education than the House.
That is accurate. That is incredibly accurate. Although we did receive an $80 million back, so hey, there you go, from the federal government.
One time?
One time.
That's part of our problem.
And there's also debate on how we're going to spend that money.
Right. Because we, we tend to use one-time money for ongoing things.
Yes.
Yeah. The governor rolled out a rural development plan that would not use it for, would all be infrastructure development, but some people in the legislature want to fill like healthcare and education gaps, especially using the phone, higher ed. So there's a, once again, a tiff between the legislature. Are you sure you want to come to Jeff City? Okay. So it'll be fine, though.
Yep.
Well, to Dr. Gaines' point, it really, truly is, it's about what you did get distributed. And from year to year to year, you sort of have to read between the lines on what's appropriated. Some years, it may mean something when they say, and they get near the end of the spring and they say they've appropriated. Other years, they say they've appropriated, but it doesn't mean anything, because you know, when you get in the year, it's going to be withheld. And that's why it's, you know, you're really sort of reading between the lines in the spring.
You have to. It's a guessing game.
Which is more difficult?
Yeah.
When your district is heavily reliant on the state.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we're like.
Kevin once said, and I'm going to kind of put you, you'd rather get your money locally from the state if you're us. You told me that once.
What'd I tell you?
You'd rather raise taxes locally than send money to Jeff City, because we don't get it all back.
I don't trust the people in Jeff City.
Do you trust me?
They're sitting right next to you, just as a heads up.
Jamie, there's room over here if you'd like to sit over here.
It works down our district.
All right. Thank you, Marshall.
I'm going to keep that in mind, Kevin.
All right. We had no comments for the second period of open comments, so Lisa, if you could move us into closed session.
I move to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of the same and other items under Missouri revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, Statute 610.0212, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, Statute 610.0213, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, Statute 610.0216, and preparation for negotiations with employee groups, Statute 610.0219.
Kevin, seconds. Lisa, roll call.
Kevin, Jamie, Jean.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Peggy.
Yes.
Lisa, yes.
Everybody have a good night.